We'll go ahead and call to order. Sorry, forgot my microphone. We'll go ahead and call to order the public hearing portion of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners. And before we do that, we want to recognize Lieutenant Governor McNally. Thank you so much for being here with us tonight.
Thank you.
To begin with, tonight, we're going to have a resolution honoring the Marlow Volunteer Fire Department, and that was requested by Mayor Frank. Lieutenant Governor, do you want to come up at the same time?
Oh, yeah.
We can tag team. So this is, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to be a little bit secretive about the resolution honoring Marlow Volunteer Fire Department, because it's really a resolution honoring W. Scott Aaron for his dedication and service to Anderson County and the Marlow Volunteer Fire Department. So Scott, if you would come forward and...
A lot of conspiracy.
Lieutenant Governor, do you want to go first, or you want me to read this however you want to proceed?
Yeah, I think both of the resolutions are similar, but they detail Scott's life and dedication to Marlow Volunteer Fire Department. I actually, back in the 80s, early 80s, served as a member of that department and got to know Scott and a lot of the old timers, Captain Hatton, Bud Robbins, and some of those people who've gone on to greater glory. But it was a real pleasure for me to get to know Scott and his dedication and commitment to the people of the Marlow community and the people of Anderson County. And we have a proclamation that honors his service. It's a Senate proclamation, and we're happy to present it to him and happy for all that he's done over the year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I was telling him that two times that I've probably been the most afraid in my life, it was not during elections, but it was once on a trailer fire, going in with an air pack and following Chief Hatton in. I believe it was Chief Hatton. All I could see was the boots. And then on a, they did a drill at Oak Ridge Fire Department with a propane fire. And that was in the summer, and it was quite warm. But thank you, Scott, for all...
Now, he spent a couple of years with us, so we enjoyed it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate what you've done.
Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Governor. I'm going to read, so folks at home and Commissioners who may not know everything about Scott will understand what an accomplished individual he is. Whereas W. Scott Aaron moved to Anderson County, Tennessee, in 1976 to begin his distinguished career at Oak Ridge National Lab after earning his BS and MS degrees in metallurgy from Pennsylvania State University. And whereas Scott started as a research and development staff member in the Isotope Research Materials Laboratory, where he contributed significantly to the custom processing of enriched, stable, and radioactive isotopes for global sales and distribution. And whereas Scott's early work encompassed the application of metallurgical, ceramic, glass, and polymer sciences to most of the elements in the period table, ranging from hydrogen, deuterium, and tritium isotopes through californium, resulting in isotope products that are used for broad ranges of research, medical, national security, and commercial applications. And whereas, as he advanced his career, Scott took on leadership roles, including serving as the Isotope Development Group Leader overseeing the expansion of his group to include the IRML, Stable Isotope Chemistry, the Isotope Enrichment Calutron Facility at the Y-12 National Security Complex, the Isotope Business Office, and the Nuclear Medicine Program. And whereas for four years prior to his retirement in 2014, Scott often served as Acting Director of the Nuclear Security and Isotope Technology Division, demonstrating exemplary leadership and dedication. And whereas after his retirement, Scott was asked to return to ORNL in 2016 as a casual employee, where he has continued to contribute to stable isotope enrichment and radioisotope processing activities and various other isotope and national nuclear security administration programs. And whereas beyond his professional achievements, Scott attended an interest meeting in 1979 about starting a volunteer fire department in the Marlow community and became a founding member of the Marlow Volunteer Fire Department, where he has served in nearly every capacity over the 46 years to the present, including that of Administrative Officer, Training Officer, Assistant Fire Chief, and Trustee. And whereas Scott was honored in 2009 as the first recipient of the Marlow Volunteer Fire Department Scott Aaron Lifetime Achievement Award, which has been named in his honor, recognizing his outstanding and enduring contributions and steadfast commitment to the safety of the community. And whereas throughout his professional and firefighting endeavors, Scott has had the unwavering support of his wife of 48 years, Anne Aaron. And whereas in addition to his roles as a husband, scientist, and firefighter, Scott cherishes his roles as a father and grandfather, consistently expressing love and support to his children and grandchildren. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this 18th day of August 2025, that we hereby recognize Mr. Scott Aaron for his endless dedication to his professional career at ORNL and gratefully acknowledge his longstanding commitment to the community through his service to the Marlow Volunteer Fire Department. Be it further resolved that we proclaim Friday, August 22nd, 2025, as Scott Aaron Day in Anderson County in recognition of his tremendous success and strong leadership in the community.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
I just went through a large conspiracy with my family and the fire department, so I'm very thankful for this recognition. It was a complete surprise to me. I also want to thank Mayor Frank, Lieutenant Governor Randy McNally, and the Commission for support that's gone on for 46 years. Ever since we started, we have the support of county mayors, county executives before that, and the Anderson County Commission. And so I thank that. It's allowed us to grow from one fire truck that was a year older than I was at the time and no fire station, to two fire stations, pumper tankers, rescue trucks, we have a boat, a drone, ATV, and we're working on our third station. So it's been very enjoyable, both at ORNL and at Y-12, or I mean not Y-12, I spent time there too, but both at ORNL and at Marlow Fire Department. And even though I'm getting much older and not as active as I used to be, I'm still working both for the fire department and at ORNL. So thank you very much for this honor.
Chairman VanderWiss, may we take a picture with Commission and bring the family up? Absolutely. Family with everybody and members of the department, if you'll come up.
After you all.
We appreciate all you've done. And thank you to Mayor Frank and Lieutenant Governor McNally for bringing you.
Thank you all.
Next on our agenda is a public hearing. It is an amendment to the Anderson County zoning resolution to include the rezoning of property at 1436 Lake City Highway Clinton. We're rezoning it from A2 Rural Residential to C1 General Commercial District. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak in favor or to speak about it?
Well, I don't have to say anything, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer.
Does anyone have any question?
Is anything on that property now, or is this a lot?
Yeah, there is. There's actually a building that's been there for quite some time. And what you have was a one-acre parcel that was zone C1 with a building on it. And there was another parcel beside of it that was about a half an acre, and they joined those two parcels together. One of them was A2, the existing one was C1, and it can't just assume the C1 zoning, and he wants to put storage units there, which requires C1 zoning. So as a result of that, that second little parcel that was just around a half an acre has to go through the rezoning process. Realistically, it's all one parcel now. It's like an acre and a half, but so, yes.
Have you gotten any comments from the public about this move?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Okay, thanks.
So the owner, is it one owner to this parcel?
Yes. Yep, one owner.
Any other questions? Is there anyone here who wanted to speak, anyone else who wanted to speak on the topic? I don't think Robbie really wants to speak on it. Well, if that is all, then we will stand in recess until 6:30. Thank you.
There was another parcel beside of it that was about a half an acre, and they joined those two parcels together. One of them was A2. The existing one was C1.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron, for your service. We appreciate all you've done. And thank you to Mayor Frank and Lieutenant Governor McNally for bringing you.
Thank you all.
Next on our agenda is a public hearing. It is an amendment to the Anderson County zoning resolution to include the rezoning of property at 1436 Lake City Highway Clinton. We're rezoning it from A2 Rural Residential to C1 General Commercial District. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak in favor or to speak about it?
Well, I don't have to say anything, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer.
Does anyone have any question? Okay.
Is anything on that property now, or is this a lot?
Yeah, there is. There's actually a building that's been there for quite some time. And what you have was a one-acre parcel that was zone C1 with a building on it. And there was another parcel beside of it that was about a half an acre, and they joined those two parcels together. One of them was A2, the existing one was C1. And it can't just assume the C1 zoning, and he wants to put storage units there, which requires C1 zoning. So as a result of that, that second little parcel that was just around a half an acre has to go through the rezoning process. Realistically, it's all one parcel now. It's like an acre and a half, but so, yes.
Have you gotten many comments from the public about this move?
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Okay, thanks.
So the owner, is it one owner to this parcel?
Yes. Yep, one owner.
Is there anyone here who wanted to speak, anyone else who wanted to speak on the topic? I don't think Robbie really wants to speak on it. Well, if that is all, then we will stand in recess until 6:30. Thank you.
There was another parcel beside of it that was about a half an acre, and they joined those two parcels together. One of them was A2, the existing one was C1.
All right, good evening, everyone. Let's call the August eighteenth, six-thirty county commission meeting to order. If you have not pressed, looks like we have quorum. First, we will start out with a prayer. I will lead prayer tonight with it being, don't cheer. My last commission meeting is chair. I would like to lead us in prayer tonight. And then we will do the pledge by, led by Vice Chair Vandergriff. Please bow with us. Father God, thank you so much for this day that you have given us. God, and I just want to thank you for, for sending your son to die on the cross for us. And God, I especially want to thank you, God, for everyone that's standing up here today. God, that they, that they answered the call to serve. Thank you for the men and women who are out on the streets, whether it be our law enforcement or EMS. God, that are serving our community so bravely. God, I thank you for the citizens of Anderson County for, for forging a path for all of us to be able to stand here today, honor you, speak to you in an open, public meeting. God, I ask that as we continue on, this meeting, that you be with us and that we keep you at the forefront of our minds, God, when we're making decisions for the county. And God be with those who, that do not know you. And God, that they will see you through us and our actions, not just as we're here tonight, but as we go out through our days. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving on to the appearance of citizens. This is a time in our meeting that we allow citizens to address the county commission on items that may be on our agenda or not on our agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the commission. Commissioner Foster will give you a thirty-second ti- warning when you've got thirty seconds left. It is a hard cutoff, but we will give you that warning. Just a reminder to be, to your words, not to be inflammatory, not to be derogatory towards anyone that's serving, or anyone in the audience, or anything like that. Just the same rules, mostly everybody's been here before, so. And then comments are directed at the chair. So, at this time, I'm going to open up the floor to anybody who would like to speak to county commission. Just raise your hand, we'll... Mr. Mullins, you're recognized, sir.
Go ahead. Before I start, I would like to thank you and your compatriots personally. As amateurs in the politics game, we don't know the rules per se, and we do need guidance, and we have our little petty rants that we don't often consider before we speak. So, it's, I'd just like to thank you personally, and appreciate your patience in educating somebody who is not steeped.
Thank you. Since you said that, I'll give you your thirty seconds.
Thank you, thank you, sir. I'm clever, I'm clever, yeah. Okay. My name is Nathan Mullins, from Oak Ridge, and for three years, I have been attempting to galvanize the God-fearing people in the countryside, who are voting for conservative change. National politics is mirrored locally. Sometimes, normal people have felt ignored by a swamp of, they may deem certain rich, overeducated, or elitist politicians, seemingly are held hostage by a woke Democrat agenda. I'm calling for traditional working-class people to run for county commission and show that they have had the courage of their conservative convictions, taught by the fundamentalist churches within this county. When Mayor Terry Frank graciously arranged the public forum of March twenty-seventh, 2023, still on YouTube, we knew when requesting this venue, that we would get more than the three hundred capacity. At the time, Mr. Anderson's library board was more than happy to put out the batty Catwoman signal, to stack the deck with some wild cards. My personal favorite was the stripper couple, who felt that their adopted kids would be great fodder for the grooming going on in the library. However, the reality that facts brought was stunning. Ninety-nine percent of county residents outside of Oak Ridge City proved the community standard, was resolutely clear to remove the sex manuals. We proved this traditional legal precedent, necessitating action by the DA and the legal department. But because of the woke allegiance by Democrat majority bureaucrats, the good people in this church-going community were ignored. So, we must, just like on the library board, properly primary liberals dominating in courthouse and steadily outflanking the loud and proud leftist radicals that run rampant with Democrat protection. We will show that the legal requirement of the Miller test has more than obviously been met, and correct the dreadful negligence that loyalty to political correctness has aided and abetted. I'll see you, fellow conservatives, on the campaign trail, as you no doubt are ready to put your principles before your peace in this county. I appreciate your patience, and thank you very much.
All right. I did see, there was a hand in the back first, Todd, I'm sorry, but I wanted to recognize, I saw a hand back there, I just didn't see a face. Yes, ma'am. Todd, we'll come to you next, sir.
Good evening, my name is Barbara McNeely Faust, and I'm from Norris, Tennessee. I have a long-term, I've lived in Anderson County all my life, as a matter of fact, I grew up in Claxton, and just recently moved three years ago to Norris. And I'm here, I'm not here to fuss or complain, I just want to make some points. Some of the things that we need to consider, and you all need to consider, is the fact that our elderly population, according to the American Association, Association of Retired Persons, sixty-one percent of people fifty years age, of age and older, are worried that they won't have enough money to make it to, through their retirement. And more notably, twenty percent of these people say that they don't even have any savings for their retirement. So, we need to worry about not having enough money to last through retirement, and places a great deal of stress on our seniors. I'm a nurse, I've been a nurse for fifty years, and, you know, my first, I'm an advocate for patients and for the people out there, and I mean, seniors worry about whether or not they're going to have enough money to make it through retirement. I know my mother and my aunt, both, when social security went to where that you had to have automatic deposit into your checking account or whatever, you didn't, they didn't get the piece of paper, their check to check, and they don't think they get the money. And so, they worry constantly about not having any money and not being able to retire. Fortunately, both of them did retire, and fortunately, you know, they did have the money when they did retire. But, a lot of people, a lot of seniors out there, don't have the understanding of what they need to do to know whether or not they've got the money. So, you know, I think that there's things that we can do to help our seniors. One of the things that we also need to be concerned about, I just recently heard on the news, that there has been an increase in seniors leaving their homes, selling their properties, and moving into rental property, because if they've got to where that they can't afford the cost of living, the upkeep of their property, and that sort of thing. As a matter of fact, that was, it's like thirty percent, there's been a thirty percent increase over the last ten years, and it's still growing. So, that's something that as politicians and as commissioners, y'all need to consider, somewhere down the road, you're going to be, you're losing population to be able to collect your revenues from, as far as taxes go. So, that's another thing I would like for y'all to point, to point out to you all. There, as a matter of fact, there, over the, I said, over the last ten years, two-point-four million people that have reached, reached the retirement age have left their homes and gone over the last ten years, so that's a lot of people to lose over across the country. So, what I would like to say is, you know, there's a lot of things that we can do, there's, according to what I found on the internet, there's a lot of thirty seconds? Okay, I'll go to my, in closing. You all are the commissioners, you all are the ones that supposedly, according to your website, set the rates of your, of our taxes. Please make the taxes fair and make them consistent. I think that if we have to pay a county tax, I think everybody should pay the same rate. I don't think there should be any exceptions for the people that live in Oak Ridge, for the people that live in Clinton, they should pay just exactly what we in Norris and Rocky Top and Oliver Springs have to pay, because they probably can afford it more than we can. So, you know, I think, in my opinion...
It's time, Ms. Faust, since it's my last meeting, I'll give you a few seconds.
Okay. In my opinion, I think that if people have their property, if they own it outright, that they don't have any liens or mortgages against their property, they shouldn't even have to pay property taxes when they get, become seniors and retire. You know, we've worked hard all of our lives, and that should be one thing, there's a lot of states that do that, Alabama does, and if Alabama can do it, Tennessee can do it. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Todd.
Todd, Todd Waterman, four-eighteen Orchard Knob Road in Clinton. Couple of years ago, I went to Chicago to testify before the EPA on behalf of the legacy coal combustion residuals, CCR, rule. I did that representing the Bull Run Neighbors Group, a group I helped organize some years ago. When we organized that, we, we set out to do, to, to find out what the community wanted from TVA and to help them get it. What we found out was that almost everyone was primarily concerned about all that coal ash around Bull Run. So, we had many meetings over that, and I guess, Mr. Mays, you, you weren't around for a lot of those, but Terry and some, some of you were. That, that rule protected, well, TVA had figured out how to exempt every single coal ash impoundment at Bull Run. And the new rule, which EPA, which I testified for, and which TVA, or which EPA adopted, now covers every one of those. And, and if, now the, the EPA wants to delay enforcement of that rule for a year or two, and most of the experts believe that's so they can figure out a way to completely gut it. And they may succeed, but that will leave all of you pretty much powerless. And, uh, TVA, I'm, I'm sorry, coal ash is full of toxins, as any of you who've read Jamie Satterfield know. You know, it's full of arsenic and lead and carcinogens and mutagens and so on. It's nasty stuff, as, as any of the survivors of the Kingston coal ash spill would tell you. I think over seventy of them are now dead. If that, if that rule is gone, that leaves us with TDEC. And, TDEC is not going to do much that the Fed doesn't do. That's, that's been their record. And that will leave y'all, again, pretty much powerless. So, my hope is, my hope is that, that, that you'll figure out a way to tell EPA not to delay that rule, and certainly not to gut it, because we really have no other protection. They may, EPA may decide that, as I believe, it, it would be a good thing to move it all with safely protected workers, unlike the Kingston ones, with the community protected by keeping the coal ash good and wet when it's loaded onto barges and trains, and hauled far away from people and water, especially our drinking water. Anyway, but they all, may also decide that, as Terry believes, and I have many very well-educated environmentalist friends who believe the same thing, that it should be left in place, that that's the safer option, but at least we'll have some protection. And EPA will be able to decide on what the best way for each community is to deal with all that coal ash that we're left with.
Thank you, Todd.
TVA will do absolutely nothing on their own. They'll, they'll give us, you know, they'll, they'll give us a, they'll give us a playground or, or, you know, a community center or something, but they won't do any more than they did for the Kingston workers.
All right, thank you, Todd. Is there anyone else? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Commissioners, I promise, that's the lean, most leaning that'll be tonight. So, let's move on to the approval and correction of agendas. First, we'll start with the consent agenda. We have a motion to accept the consent agenda as is, order. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Yeager, is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The regular agenda. Madam Mayor, under new business, you mentioned, if you want to explain it more articulate to me?
We had a motion a year ago...
How about we put it under your report?
Okay, that'll be fine, sure.
So, the folks that are listening...
Sure.
May not be on dear new business.
So, it's about acceptance of funds for Claxton Park and Lost Bottom.
Perfect. And Robbie, I'm good with what we talked about, you're just reading the bond information. Is there any other changes to the motion? We have a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Allen, are you, is that with what we've got going? Commissioner Allen, you're good? Any other? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we will move on to the public hearing report by Vice Chair Vandergriff.
Thank you, Chairman. Earlier this evening, we, during the public hearing portion, we had an amendment to, a proposed amendment to the Anderson County zoning resolution, to include the rezoning of a property of fourteen thirty-six Lake City Highway, from A-two rural residential to C-one general commercial. I will need a motion on that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concluded the business during the public hearing.
All right, can we get a motion for the resolution honoring the volunteer fire department, since that's, I know it's honorary, but with it being a resolution? Uh, we have a motion and second for the resolution. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll come down real quick, just, and if I could be joined with, by the female commissioners, that'd be wonderful, Madam Mayor. Ms. McCully and Annette, most employees. And I'll recognize the folks that don't know the folks in the room. Commissioner Ebony Capshaw, Commissioner Saber Bochamp, Cassandra, I forgot your last name. And then we got Commissioner Vandergriff, Becca McCully, Annette Pruitt, and then our esteemed leader, Terry Frank, and Lydia Beckwood's in the back. All right. Where's Commissioner Palmer? And, I hope our next chair, Commissioner Palmer. All right, I want to read a proclamation honoring the women of Anderson County government. What you see behind me isn't just a small example and sample of the people who serve in Anderson County for us. Whereas, the Anderson County Commission proudly acknowledges the invaluable contributions of the women who serve in every department and office of Anderson County government. And whereas, these women demonstrate unwavering hard work, dedication, and professionalism in carrying out their responsibilities for the benefit of the citizens of Anderson County. And whereas, their leadership in... And whereas their leadership, integrity, and commitment to excellence strengthen our government, enhance public trust, and set a standard of service worthy of recognition. And whereas the women of Anderson County Government provide vital expertise, innovative solutions, steadfast support that ensure the effective delivery of essential services to our community. And whereas their contributions reach far beyond the workplace, inspiring others through their example of civic duty, perseverance, and compassion. And whereas the women of Anderson County serve in wide variety of roles, whether in administrative, public safety, education, health, finance, or community services, and each role is essential to the success of our county government. And whereas their service today continues a proud legacy of women whose leadership and vision have shaped the history and progress of Anderson County for generations. And whereas the Commission recognizes that the continued success and progress of Anderson County are due in no small part to the talent, dedication, and leadership of these women. Now therefore be it resolved that the Anderson County Commission hereby recognizes and honors the women of Anderson County Government for their hard work, dedication, leadership, and integrity, and extends its deepest appreciation for their outstanding service to the people of Anderson County. Adopted this 18th day of August, 2025. I just want to say a really quick note that my love for government honestly started in this building when I was five years old and my mom worked here. And I used to find every little nook and cranny that they had. I knew every candy box that elected officials had. Um, as you can see, I haven't stopped that. However, but I wanted to say that, um, sometimes we go without, uh, we overlook the people who paved the way for us. And I know my mom's probably watching because she'll critique me after the meeting, but I just wanted to thank her publicly too, uh, who helped me find the love for serving people and for serving this county. And it's folks like her, the mayor, Cassandra, everybody in front of me that, that make this county so great. All right. Go into presentation of reports. County Mayor Terry Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have the one item added to the agenda. I do have the animal shelter statistics in there. If possible, I would like to pull those and not put those in the minutes. Damon alerted me that he has an error in there. Normally, he's been sending those to me about a week out, and, uh, he was down to the wire and made a mistake where he did not put the euthanasias on there. We did have two in that time period, one cat, one dog, but I need to pull that. Also, the, um, new item. So back in 2024, um, we had passed a motion to accept a donation of $250,000 from TVA. And the motion clarified that that was to be restricted for a new Claxton Park. TVA is on a fiscal year that ends September 30th. Their intent at that time was to get us those funds. What happened during the timeframe was Hurricane Helene, and of course, all that happened there, and so we did not get those funds. They're now approaching the end of the fiscal year, and I got a phone call that they're ready to distribute those funds now. But they're also going to add $50,000 in there for Lost Bottom Park. So I just wanted to get a motion, that way I could, um, do what they need, which is to do an official request for the funds so that they could, uh, execute that payment before end of fiscal year. So I want to make sure that, um, we keep, um, you know, the motion, and if we want to lump it together, um, to accept $250,000 from TVA and restrict it for a new Claxton Park, and $50,000 for Lost Bottom Park, for a total of $300,000.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Palmer and seconded by Commissioner Foster. Uh, Robbie, do you need any type of restricted revenue code to go with that, or is this motion fine? Okay. All right. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I did want to kind of, um, alert Commission to an issue that took place at the Oak Ridge Animal Shelter. You may have seen reports over the weekend where an individual was, um, arrested and is being charged with, um, the commission of an act of terrorism. And, uh, this happened at the Oak Ridge Animal Shelter, and reading the affidavit of complaint from the officers, um, this individual used a lot of language, um, about, uh, blowing your brains out, um, active threat to bomb the animal shelter. A lot of very alarming things, um, uh, were threatened. And one of the, uh, the reason I'm bringing this up is one of the, um, things that the individual is alleged to have said in the affidavit of complaint by the officer, um, was that you're a killing house, aren't you? And Oak Ridge is going down. So I wanted just to kind of clear the air, because there's a lot of misconception about what the terminology no-kill shelter means. It's actually not, there's not a national standard for no-kill. There's basically kind of agreement amongst the rescue community that no-kill is 10% or less. And, um, Oak Ridge has done a fantastic job of maintaining that status, but there still are times where humane euthanasia does occur. There may be an aggressive animal, uh, that obviously, um, has, you know, bitten someone or attacked someone and cannot be adopted, or there may be medical issues. And so, um, those are always difficult decisions for the shelter staff. And I just wanted to kind of put that out there for the community, that even, um, our shelter this, you know, last 2024 was able to achieve that no-kill status, but there, that doesn't mean that there is no humane euthanasia that does not occur. And so, um, I just wanted to kind of put that out there and make sure folks understand that, and, um, we will keep a, an eye on this, and, and, um, it's very unfortunate, but, um, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Bochamp, before we go to you, Commissioner, I did not catch Commissioner Vandegrift for, fast, so.
I just had a really quick question for you, just to get a, maybe an update on the audit, and that, that may be something that's with purchasing, I'm, I'm not sure. And then also, um, the land adjacent to the shelter and the software. Can we get updates on those?
Yes, so, uh, I did talk to Mr. Long about getting out there and meeting with him on doing what he needs to do to make that an interest, uh, an entrance, and I don't know if that's, I don't know what all that's called, but he said he's happy to do that, and we'll, we're going to meet down there. Uh, the software, we did put in a notice of, um, uh, termination with our existing COMCATE that expires on 9/30, and so we gave them the proper 30-day notice. They're going to download into our new program, uh, that will handle all things shelter in addition to all the animal control side of things. And, um, Mr. Brooks has already reviewed the agreement with the software com, uh, software company, uh, and there's three modifications that he has suggested. He's going to get that letter over, but I've already sent that to the software company. So we've gone through and done a test drive with that. We think it's going to be a really good program. It'll make life a lot easier for what we're doing now, for instance, this reporting. And we're still working on, uh, operational audit.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. And thank you for bringing that to our attention, the, the incident in Oak Ridge. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Bochamp.
Yeah, I want to go back to what the mayor was saying about the incident with the, uh, individual-
Yes, ma'am.
...over the weekend, and, um, the, the mayor's being kind about what's actually in that, um, uh, alleged warrant of things that happened. Not only was the facility put in danger, the workers were put in danger, the volunteers were put in danger, and the defendant was put in danger. And I, I don't say this lightly, about 85% of the cases that I deal with out of the court system is mental health related. So I would like to caution people as we're talking about animals or anything else, that we be careful and be kind of what we're putting out there on social media, because when you say things in your passionate tone, other people don't see it that way. And, um, I, I don't know if that's what caused this individual to do this. It was very shocking to see this, but when you put statements out there, sometimes people can't handle it. And, um, I would just caution people, yeah, you may have a love for animals, you may want something different, um, but let's be kind, because there's somebody out there that's struggling mentally, that may not understand this, and go out and actually try to commit an act of violence against a shelter, the worker, the animals. A lot of things and people were put into a bad situation over the weekend, and, um, you know, the mayor's being very nice about what actually happened. It's a very scary situation, so I just want to throw that out there when we're putting things on social media. Let's be cautious about what our neighbor thinks, or what this might appear to them, because a lot of people, um, this could happen again. This could happen in Clinton. I mean, it happened in Oak Ridge right down the road. This could happen at our animal shelter, and I would hate for our employees, the animals, the building, the, the person to be put in that kind of situation. So I would just caution everybody to be very careful about what you say and how you react to things.
All right, Mayor, anything else?
Thank you, that's all I have.
All right. Robbie, you're up.
All right. Cash and fund balance report, unaudited, um, until, um, after November probably. But, um, general fund, restricted funds, 1.3 million. The committed funds, 357,761. Assigned funds, 2,237,153. Unassigned fund balance, 14,795,157. Total fund balance, 18,734,341. Cash, 17,614,261. Schools, 13,302,172. Fund balance, 10.9 million, 10.9, 10,900,000 in cash. So, um, any questions on the fund balance, cash and fund balance report?
All right, go ahead.
Sales tax. The county, um, in June finished 8.1% compared to last June above, and, um, the general, the Anderson County portion was 137,873, uh, more than last June. So, um, good sales tax numbers for June. The ARPA projects report, um, basically the same as the last month. We do have eight projects unfinished. December 31st, 2026 is the deadline for that. Also, total interest remaining, 234,815,46. We did earn another $7,400 in, um, July that's not reflected on this, and, um, we'll probably continue to earn pretty, um, 5,000 to 7,000 each month until a couple of these bigger projects have been paid for, and they will be later in the year, I, I think. So, um, we should have some good interest numbers before it's all over. And the grant inventory list, uh, two new, two new grants, one for the mayor's office and Norris Library at the, um, from last month, so. Any questions on any of those reports?
Uh, Commissioner Yeager, you're recognized.
All right, I'm just looking at the in-progress items, and ambulances are on our, um-
There's over 1.2 million dollars in ambulances.
What, what if we don't get them on time?
Where, Nathan assures me we're going to get them.
I don't like those words. That's, that's a fair question. Uh, we do have three scheduled to be delivered within the next two months. Uh, we have one that's currently being remounted, which we paid for in December out of ARPA funds. It's at, currently being done and processed, so that'll be done before the end of the calendar year. That, the second one will be going right after it, um, so it'll be done before summertime. The last two that we ordered in 2022, uh, are scheduled for August of 2026 for delivery.
Okay. All right, just, I, I hate to give up money, so I appreciate-
100% agree.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
All right.
Robbie, that's-
Okay, next up is the purchasing contracts. All have had legal review, there are 12 of those, seeking approval. Can I answer any questions?
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Bochamp. Approving these as a group. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Thank you. And, uh, also, five vehicles from the sheriff's department for surplus.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Bochamp. Any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to the budget amendments, under Group Four appropriations from the school department, there are three of those, all from one, Fund 141.
We have a motion and a second to approve as a group. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Thank you. Under Group Six appropriations, non-school, there are five of those, one from the highway department, one from the drug fund, and three from the general fund.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve these as a group. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Thank you. Group Seven appropriations that affect the general fund and assigned fund balance, there are four of those, um, EMS, finance grants, and two others from finance, which, one is EMS vehicles and share vehicles.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Bochamp. Approve this as a group. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Thank you. And in Group Eight transfers, non-school, there is one from the law director's office that affects payroll for $3,200.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And Robbie, this is just a transfer, right?
Yes.
We can voice vote this?
No.
It's not an appropriation? We've already appropriated the money?
Transfers with payroll and, or they need full approval. I mean-
We'll just do the board.
I would rather do a board vote, just to be safe.
All right.
We always have, anyway.
Go to the board and vote.
Let's don't switch it up on your last reading, you know.
You're crazy.
Right?
It's like when you see the light at the end of the tunnel, it's so bright, it's going to mess it with you. Uh, Commissioner Smallridge. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Under Group Nine miscellaneous, Section A was three grant applications. Um, all three are approved by the Budget Committee, um, seeking approval. Just to apply.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote. Motion carries.
Okay, Section B, the solar signs at Carahola were deferred, um, I think to the highway department, or highway committee. Section C, Health Department renovation bids, a motion by Commissioner Bochamp and seconded by Commissioner Vandegrift to commit funding up to $500,000 in order to move forward with the Health Department renovations. If additional funds-
to move forward with the health department renovations if additional funding comes from the state. And that motion did pass.
And I think we have some news on that, too, don't we, Mayor?
Yes, so after the budget committee vote, I did let the state know, and they were already looking into it, but they did get back with me right away, and we got approval for another two hundred and twenty-seven thousand plus the hundred and twenty-three thousand. And they said, if this is approved tonight, then they will initiate all the necessary paperwork tomorrow to get us those extra funds.
Great. Good job. All right. Seeing no discussion, go to the board and vote, please. Commissioner Beauchamp. Unless you're torn. Motion passes.
Section D was deferred to the next meeting, the pre-trial revenue. Under Section E, the detention facility work release program, there was a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp and seconded by Commissioner Vandergriff to approve the detention facility work release program. There should, there will be a resolution coming with, for this, because there is some revenue involved for the county that we have to approve from commission to be able to collect revenue for that, so.
So do you want a motion tonight or just wait?
We, I mean, I don't think it's, it's not ready yet, is it, Mr. Brooks?
Just wait.
I would like a motion just to approve the work, like what the budget committee.
That works. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And under Section F, we discussed capital outlay requests, and there was an approval for EMS vehicles and share vehicles, and also some EMS projects for consideration to pay from the one seventy-one fund, and that motion passed as well.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Palmer, you're recognized.
Just one little question, Robbie. Is that in addition, are these in addition to what we just looked at on that ARP?
Yes.
Okay.
This is for, I mean, so this will be another two years down the road.
Down the road, gotcha.
Whenever we order an ambulance, it's usually a couple of years.
Okay, I thought, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
All right.
And so it's on their phone, I would pull it out and hit it, but I'd call nine-one-one and I'd get in trouble. But it is very, very extensive of what it can do. We've already used it one time this year at Anderson County High School. You can use it for a medical emergency. It is two-way communication. All of our teachers and staff have it on their app, and it's, and it's geofenced to where that, really, I'm outside of their geofences, I couldn't do it anyway. But it's a pretty neat thing, and it's just one other safety kind of layer that we're working on. We're actually working on, too, putting safety vestibules in all of our schools. We've got Campbell and Associates right now are working on the design for Grand Oaks Elementary School and Norris Elementary School. We did Lake City last year, and CRCS worked on those. Just another thing, our summer feeding, a total of sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight meals were given away this summer to our schools.
All right.
Just a few tidbits.
Hold one second, we've got two that's lit up. Go ahead. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Barrett, if I read the internet right, public school students receive two hundred and seventy-two dollars less on average?
Yes, the voucher students.
Than the voucher students, is that, so that's the average for the state? Do we know the numbers for Anderson County?
Well, it, what they do is, if they take that two hundred, seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, and then what they do is, the state gives a portion of that, and then the county gives a portion of that. I think we're at seventy-one percent comes from the state and twenty-nine percent comes from the county. So what they're doing is, the county's having to foot the bill. A lot of counties are not as fortunate as we are in Anderson County, that you all support public schools. So those are the ones that are really going to hurt with that. So, you know, it would be, I would hope that we could get the same thing from that. If you look, and the closest one to us, I think, was Mississippi, and they average another thousand dollars per student. And if you think about that, that'd be five point nine million extra dollars we could get in Anderson County. That'd be pretty good money. We could do a lot with five point, almost six million dollars.
Since, well, I thought that since they'd kind of rolled that out as it was going to be a hold harmless kind of thing, do you think that we could, or is the school board going to ask the state or our state representatives or anything to make up the difference?
Well, when you, the way that works is if our numbers, you know, we get funded on last year's numbers. So if our numbers decrease, they say we'll get the same funding from the state. But what that doesn't take into account is if, if we lose a hundred students, and we've lost quite a few, two vouchers, we know already this year, that, that funding will come in at the same level, but if we had kept those students, we would have got a whole lot more funding because of the cost of living and things like that. So, yeah, the funding will not go any lower. This is kind of the, the, I guess you'd say, the baseline of it. But the problem is, everything else is going to go up, and they're going to tell us, we've got to give a two percent pay raise, and that'll have to come from somewhere, so we'll see.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Isbell, you're recognized.
Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Barrett, it's been brought to my attention, at Lake City Elementary School, we've got several disabled children that's not able to participate in any of the activities out on the playground. They just have to, you know, sit in wheelchairs or whatever. Is there any plans to have anything like that?
I had a conversation with some people about that today, and we're going to look into it, because our playgrounds are handicapped accessible. We have to, over the last twenty years, every playground we put in is handicapped accessible. So I got to call this afternoon and put into them, and we'll see where that is. But I'm not sure why they would have said that.
Well, that's one of the things I was wondering, because Boys and Girls Club went up there and did some work as well, you know, there and at Norris, but that's what I wanted to check into, and see if there's something there that would prohibit them from engaging in it.
Not, not that I know of, but I'll check into it and get back to you.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, we want, we want all of our students to be accessible to the playground.
All right, Commissioner Allen, you're recognized.
Tell us exactly what a safety vestibule is. I think that's very, very important.
A safety vestibule is, so what happens right now at a lot of our schools, when a, when somebody, we have a camera, so when they come up, there's a camera there, and they say, my name's Tim Perry, and I'm here to pick up my son or daughter. And they buzz us in. Well, when they buzz in, now they're open to the whole school. So what will happen now is the vestibule, if you go to Lake City Elementary School, you go into a secured area, there is a kiosk there, then I have to pull my, I have to pull my license out, I put it into the kiosk, then it tells me if I'm the right person, if I'm, if I have anything. It will, and we do that for everybody when they get to the office, but now we'll do it before. And so if there is a person there that has a warrant out for them, if there's a person there that's a child molester or somebody, or they're not supposed to be in non-contact, then they won't ever get out into the school.
Exactly.
Yep.
Very good, thank you.
Yes.
Dr. Barrett, thank you.
Thank you. I hate to hear this is your last night, but you've done a great job, I appreciate you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you all.
All right, Mr. Brooks.
Really, it's, you can see, we've got a list of the contracts, we've got the zoning and bankruptcy matters in the report. Under Other, just a listing of things, including some letters prepared and sent at the request of commission. Item number four, which was the open records request by a former deputy, happy to report the thousands of pages that comprise that request have been delivered to human, or human resources and are ready to be picked up upon payment of the fee. Under, let's say, there's a couple of resolutions referred to that are going to be covered in, I believe, operations. There is, however, one item, it's number fourteen, under Other, that does need some action. And what that involves is, one of the recipients of the opiate funds, they applied, the check was written, but the, it's not an entity that the check was written to, Foundation House. Foundation House is under its parent LLC, which did apply, according to the, I looked at the application. So we've had to go back and redo that agreement to reflect that it's RTTN Properties LLC as the, for the benefit of Foundation House. And that will allow the check to match the agreement. Totally satisfied with the protections that are in the agreement for a hold harmless, for insurance that, and for the quarterly reporting that, we're okay. It's, it's just that the, we can't do it directly to Foundation House because they're, they're just a name, they're not an entity or anything. So I'm, I guess that needs some action. Well, it's an information item, but I feel like it needs your approval before I deliver it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Palmer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Litigation updates are there in front of you. Item two, I wish I could have reported, we were cut loose from that today, but we're, we've been placed on the sideline while some activities take place in a different case. So we're just on the sideline with it right now.
All right.
Any questions about anything commission has, I'll do my very best answer.
I don't have a question, but once that Purdue Pharmacy bankruptcy starts rolling through, if maybe we could keep an eye on what kind of impact that may have on, on our opioid dollars moving forward. It may not have anything at all, but just something that we could probably keep an eye on.
We would hope it would, you know, have a positive impact since it's an additional source, where there's a couple of other sources as well, so we will keep an eye on that, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These, are these twelve new bankruptcies for the month? These are, this carryover, I'm just concerned, it seems like our numbers of bankruptcies continue to go up.
They are.
I want to say about half are new and about half are, were existing, Commissioner.
Okay.
I think, I think that's a fair assessment of it.
And I think your report looks great. Thank you for all the information.
All right. Moving on, Committee, Operations Committee report, Chairman Isbell.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question for the law director.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Before we get started, and it's on the two resolutions.
Yes, sir.
That we discussed in Operations Committee.
Okay.
And one was to merge Intergovernmental Committee and Legislative Committee with Operations Committee. And the other one was for to decrease five, the number of members on the nonprofit committee. Do we need to take that up? Is that just for information, or?
We're going to cover it in rules.
You're going to do it in rules?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir. You can go ahead on your report.
Commissioner Foster made a motion to approve Resolution Number Twenty-Five dash zero-eight dash one-two-two-four, authorized in Anderson County to join the State of Tennessee and other local governments in amending Tennessee State Subdivision Opioid Abatement Agreement and approving the related settlement agreements, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Twenty-Five dash zero-eight one-two-two-four. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner Yeager made a motion to approve a resolution to authorize a twelve dollar and fifty cent charged by the clerk of every court in Anderson County having jurisdiction of state misdemeanors and felonies, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right, I'm not going to debate this, because I don't want to hang over the gavel, but I just want to caution everyone that more court costs are going to be coming down the pike from the state. And eventually, at what point do we stop just taxing the, I mean, speed, speeding tickets are pretty high, and I'm not saying that we should do away with it, but, and also, I would just say, too, that this is for a state office, and there's a good argument to be, to be made that this revenue would jump any of our, not litigation tax, but any of our local revenue, like clerk fees and stuff like that. While twelve fifty does sound minimal, after the last twenty years, it has compiled up to a lot. And at some point, with the workhouse and other things that we're doing, I just wonder if we're just being counterproductive, but that's my TED talk. I will be a no on this motion. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hmm. Let's go to the board and vote on the motion. Remember, it will take nine to pass. The majority does not lower due to absences. Motion fails. All right, Commissioner.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion to allow the law director seek direction from district attorney or state representative on how to proceed with getting access to family cemeteries in question, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion to enter the email received from Maralina Gore, project manager, T-Dot Region One Project Management, to the minutes, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Operations Committee report.
Thank you, sir. All right, I know Intergovernmental just had information, that's in your packet. Fire Commission report, the same, no action items needed.
Mr. Chairman.
Madam.
On the Fire Commission report, I have just a quick modification I would like to ask. I don't know if, since the chair's not here, I just wanted, on the portion where, on their minutes, they discussed the nineteen forty-seven Fireworks Private Act, I did want it to be noted that a commissioner from the Legislative Committee did go to the Fire Commission and discuss the Fireworks Act and what the Legislative Committee was doing as far as trying to update that, that private act. And I just wanted there to be a note that there was collaboration between County Commission and the Fire Commission, that County Commission has gone to them with the information through the Legislative Committee. So just, just to update their notes.
So I think that could be, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but that we could add that as a part of a note for our minutes, but I don't think this body can.
Okay.
Override what the Fire Commission approved, but we could maybe add that in our, in our discussion, or part of, part of the minutes for us, just saying commissioner comments or something like that in it. But I don't, I don't think as a body we can correct their minutes.
Just for posterity sake, in the future, that there would be a record that we did collaborate with Fire Commission on this private act, amending this private act.
Yeah, all righty. All right, is there a motion to accept the minutes? I know that, that's something we normally do here. We have a motion and a second with the addition of just the commissioner's notes, Commissioner Palmer's notes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, all right, Rules Committee, Commissioner Smallridge.
Rules Committee has four or five motions for commission tonight, and also, I think there were two resolutions that you should have in front of you relating to two of those recommendations. First one is revision of Rule Two, Number Eleven. Commissioner Foster made a motion for the law director to rewrite Rule Eleven, Number Eleven, to eliminate the nominating committee seconded by Commissioner Allen. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Motion passed to forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Is there anything clarifying that nominating citizen applications for like Beer Board and other boards that normally go through nominating, will this now go through operations? Is that the intent?
Full commission.
Okay. Full commission.
The way that rule, we took it out from, we took out from the nominating part, everything stayed the same, we just removed the language from nominating, and he, and Audrey Brooks cleared up some language there for us, but after nominating, there's no, nothing in our rules say nominate anymore.
Okay, sounds good. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under unfinished business, Committee Chair motions and seconds, Commissioner Foster made a motion to add Rule Number Twenty-Six. The Chairman of County Commission and the Chairman of any committee shall not make or second any motion without first passing the gavel. Seconded by Commissioner Allen, motion passed to forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second, which is, that's pretty consistent with Robert's rules anyway. All right, any discussion?
We've always been in that round.
Not always, not when he was Budget Chair. Just to be honest.
We can look at the record for all the other Chairman of the Committees too, we need to.
Commissioner Yeager.
That was never a defined action, to pass it. It was kind of sometimes did and sometimes didn't, and so this was just to kind of confirm that we're now going to have passing gavels for those items. Robert's rules does not prohibit it, but it, it definitely discourages it.
Certainly, yeah. All right, sorry, Commissioner. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Consolidating Committees. Commissioner Foster made a motion to merge the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committees with Operations Committee, beginning September one, two thousand twenty-five. Seconded by Commissioner Allen, motion passed to forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Isbell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the reasons that I'm going to support this is like in intergovernmental, and I've got the copies of the minutes, it started back in June fourteenth of two thousand twenty-one, when we made a motion to approve or to clean up the American Nuclear Site. If we hadn't have done that, it was going to take three hundred years for that to clean itself up, okay? And it goes all the way through to October twenty twenty-three. And I wish that the people, especially of Anderson County and anywhere else, could have saw everything that went together with this group of Commissioners, the Mayor, everything that we did to try to get that through, because it's very important. And tomorrow, we're going to meet with EPA, and, and they're going to talk about this, and I, I think it's a milestone in Anderson County. So, you know, I just wish that there was a, a record of it, you know, so the people go back and see it.
Yeah, that's a good point, Commissioner. All right. Is there any other discussion on this motion? And so you're, this is now going to just be Operations?
Yeah, there'll be, those committees will not exist in the future, they'll, all that, those kind of items will run through the Operations Committee.
Sounds good. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Composition of Nonprofit Committee. Commissioner Foster made a motion that starting September one, two thousand twenty-five, nonprofit committee will be five members with a Chairman and Vice Chairman. Seconded by Commissioner Allen, motion passed for, to forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and it sounds like an endorsement from the Chair of Nonprofit. Commissioner Isbell, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to speak on behalf of the Commissioner Wondell sits to the left, and we had some conversation about this at the end of Operations Committee, and people can go back and watch that. But what, the reason why he wasn't for that is because it reduces the amount of people. If you go five, then you're going to have to have three show up. And what he was talking about is, is, you know, representation to the rural areas, how three people could say whether or not something didn't go through, when you eliminate that down, because how do you decide five, or instead of eight, or, you know, originally it was nine?
Mm-hmm. That's a good point. Commissioner Foster.
I'll defer to Commissioner Yeager.
Commissioner Yeager.
All right, I've got a couple of thoughts about this. This is a, a subcommittee of budget, just like opioid is a subcommittee of budget. Our cap is fifteen thousand dollars for nonprofit. And if you look at it, eight people refer to eight other people, which refer to sixteen people, so we have thirty-two people touching a request that max out to fifteen thousand I've never had a, an eight-person committee whenever I've called a nonprofit committee. Rarely do I have seven. So, if, if someone wants to make an amendment to, to leave this at eight, and I'm going to, I'm going to touch, the second whereas, I don't think we ever had nine, I think that was always an eight, because it was one from each committee. But if, if this resumes back to eight, I will probably, I, I will be coming off that committee, because I think it is a complete waste of manpower to have thirty-two people look at a maximum of a fifteen thousand dollar donation. So, that's, and if this does pass, we will need to open membership to the, to the committee, because we'll, we'll have to have new members, so that's, that's a secondary item on this. But I, I fully support reducing this from eight to five.
Yes, sir.
And my motion is to approve the resolution, and where that is. If it's not nine, if it needs to be corrected, eight, but what you found was nine? Okay.
I think I was going about what I was.
Okay.
We, we were unable to find the resolution that established the nonprofit. We've looked for it, we've, we've searched our electronic files and I've, and drove Annette crazy.
Okay. With this, yeah, I'll, in my motion, I'll make that corrected with the eight.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Isbell, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you for letting me speak again on this subject, and I was just, you know, talking what Commissioner Wondell, what his concerns were, because he's, he's not able to be here tonight. But the, the way that I see it, if it goes, if it's five and only three show up, we can always bring it back up. Like, say for instance, if it's something Commissioner vows district of mine, and, and it don't pass, then we can bring it back up in Budget Committee, because that's where it's got to go anyway, because I understand what Commissioner Yeager's saying, touches thirty-two people. And just like in the Rules Committee, sometimes you are, you know, you may only have three people show up, but we can still bring it back up under Operations, you know, for discussion that something came out. So, it's not that it's just one committee and it's done, there's other ways to bring it up. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect. Commissioner Vow, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In honor of your last meeting as being the Chair, I'm going to take every second that you're willing to let me speak.
You have two minutes and forty-eight seconds left.
You'll get thirty-second warning here in a minute.
To take everybody on a trip down memory lane about where, how we have wound up here, a wise man that sat on the Budget Committee with me, Jerry White, Chuck Fritz, and a couple of others, we were on Budget Committee together, and we kept having groups, nonprofit groups, coming in front of Budget Committee, asking for assistance, asking for financial assistance. I can remember before I was on this board, we had a nonprofit committee. So, every time somebody would come and ask for financial assistance, Chuck, or Jerry, or one of us would say, no, we don't do that anymore, we don't have the nonprofit committee, we can't vet them, we can't go through all this process to figure out which ones we want to financially assist and which ones we can't. So, I brought it up, after about the half a dozen time that we had those requests, let's go ahead and get the nonprofit committee started back. Jerry warned us that if we went back to that, there were going to be such issues, so Jerry was correct. I thought Phil did an outstanding job looking at the old rules of the nonprofit committee, and updating them, and bringing them up to speed. But going to Commissioner Isbell and Commissioner Wondell's point of this, if the heavy lifting is done in committee, and the Budget Committee, and the Operations Committee, and a couple of others committees are, are looking for ways to condense the time down, and a full county commission's looking for a way to condense the time down, I look at the clock, then the heavy lifting should be done in committees. Phil's point that, and I think I'm, I understand it correctly, you're saying keep the nonprofit, but just reduce it to five.
Yes, sir.
So, there's still going to be a nonprofit committee that's going to do the heavy lifting of going through the process you wrote, vetting all of these requests.
Thirty seconds.
Vetting all these requests, I'll have somebody yield time to me. And then still it going in front of Budget Committee.
Process doesn't change, just the composition of the.
So, out of the thirty-two, how many is that going to reduce to them?
I just.
Okay, okay. Well, I thought my bresel arithmetic was somewhere in that neighborhood, I just.
I'm, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Take, take, put, take it off my time. Commissioner Vandergriff hears this three times. She hears it on nonprofit, on budget, and in commission, and there are others that hear it three times also. Some people hear it twice, I hear it twice, some people hear it once, but it's just an outsized use of manpower for the size of requests that we get.
Well, I, I get your point, and it's a valid point, but I guess somebody who's been married for a while hearing things more than once really doesn't bother me.
But like, the process doesn't change, it's the composition of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Foster, in honor of Commissioner Mead, you're the motion, motion maker, you get the last word.
I will say, you know, Commissioner Yeager made points hearing rules about this, and when we looked at the number, and, and really, it's the nonprofits to make sure procedurally they have everything in order, have everything done right, then can go on to Budget, and then talk about the money and those kind of things. So, I, I support this, obviously, as the motion maker.
All right. All right, so, we understand the motion. All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Ayes, have it, motion carries.
Under new business, Commissioner Foster made a motion that Budget Committee members will serve as Commission representatives on the Audit Committee, starting September one, two thousand twenty-five. Seconded by Commissioner Allen, motion passed to forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the report from the Rules Committee.
The biggest one, probably, in the history of the county.
Good job, Chairman.
All right. All right, we've already taken care of the new business item that the Mayor had. Are there any announcements before we, yes, sir?
I didn't mean to make a motion. I have an announcement.
Commissioner Yeager, I'll go to you first, sir.
Committees, we're talking Committees now. We, we don't have any, anybody coming off, or anybody coming on Committees, and we are supposed to do that every year. So, I think it's, it's time, I don't, we usually do this in August. We didn't get a, a request to have people request to come on or off, or to stay, but I think that if, we need to start that, we're, I think we're a month behind. So, if, if anybody wants to come off a Committee, or anyone wants to go on a Committee, I, this is my opinion, there are no carryover terms. It's, everything's a one-year term, and you have to say if you want to stay on, if you want to come off, or if you want to go on. And sometimes we might have four people for a three-person, or we don't have three, maybe six people for a five, and we have to, we have to vote. We've taken away the nominating Committee, and so those will be done in full commission. But we don't have any, anything in place for our Committees right now. I need, I need to have a, an election to get five members for my new, new nonprofit size. So, I think the way to do that is to have people, Annette needs to be the, the go-to person. So, if people will go to Annette and tell her what they want to, if they want to stay on all their Committees, just say that. If they want to come on to the nonprofit Committee, I'll be going on, so I need four more. And if, if some, if anyone wants to be on a Committee for the first time, I think every year, people should have an opportunity. You know, some of us only serve one time, and we get frozen off Committees, because no one wants to come off a, a Committee that they've been on. And I just think that there are no lifetime appointments to these Committees, and everyone should have an opportunity to serve whenever they, whenever they like, and if they get voted on, fine, if they get, if they get voted, go to down, fine, but I think the, the movement in Committees has been too slow over the years, and no one has had, not everybody's had an opportunity to, to apply to a Committee. So, that's my, thanks for not starting the time. I think we need to, to come up with some kind of an agreement that we, starting September first, or starting whenever we want, but we have to get our, get our choices into Annette by a certain date, so she can put it on the next Commission agenda. We don't have a, we don't have a route for that right now, so that's what I'm kind of trying to get started, and.
Okay.
Can I say something?
You bet.
I have the forums ready, I was just waiting to see what the Commission did with these that were pending.
Okay. Email will suffice too, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll send it down. I think I have a folder.
Great.
Thank you, Annette. Commissioner Foster, announcement.
Yep. I will say the only thing that does have a term is Operations and Budget. But today is my wife's birthday, so I would want to make sure I give her a shout out, so happy birthday to Katie, if she's watching, she's probably not.
Well, you should have been there. Commissioner Capshaw, then Commissioner Isbell.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, the Commissioners that came out to the Free Medical Clinic tailgate bash, that was last weekend, Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Isbell, Commissioner Wondell, I saw Commissioner Smallridge, thank you, Mayor, for coming as well. We raised a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, and I wanted to thank everybody in Anderson County that came out and helped and supported. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Isbell.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you for your excellent leadership for the last two years.
Thank you.
You led us well, and I'm sure that will continue in some means.
I appreciate that.
But you've always been the go-to guy, and I appreciate that, and I want to say hello to my grandson Colton, as I was going out the door, he didn't understand. So, I told him I'd say hello if he was watching.
Good deal. All right, any other announcements? Seeing none, we will stand adjourned.